Good evening and welcome this evening to the Queensbury Board of Education Workshop. And to begin, would you please join me in rise to the floor. Thank you all for joining us. We have a large number of students online. Thank you. I believe we have both in person and online. We have all nine board members. And to begin the evening, just want to make one clarification for those that aren't familiar with the education meeting and workshop. This is a workshop and this evening we're going to be receiving some information. And there will be no resolutions presented and no votes taken. We're here to be presented with some information from Dr. Bill Borges and Mr. Giannan and Mr. Peters. So to begin, we're very pleased to have joined us this evening, Dr. Bill Borges. And Dr. Borges is the Chief Medical Officer for Warren County Public Health Department and also the Hudson Headwaters Network. And he's presented us with some information, some statistics and general guidance regarding COVID.
Sure. So thank you for having me here this evening. So as Dan said, I'm here really as a representative of the Warren County Public Health Department. I serve several roles. So I'm a family physician. I am the Chief Medical Officer for Hudson Headwaters. And I'm actually the medical advisor for Warren County Public Health. So I work very closely with the team there and with the different public health departments in our regional counties, all the way from Albany to Saratoga to as far north as St. Lawrence County, Clinton County. And I've enjoyed that role and it's certainly become a bigger issue this year than most years. We've really learned to work together and collaboratively. Before I say anything else, as Mr. Manic said, I really am here to present information tonight. And to be very clear, I am not here to try to tell anyone how to vote or how not to vote on this very complex issue. I really am keenly aware of the complexities of COVID-19 management. It's been a huge part of my job for the last year, really on an everyday basis. I want to come really out of respect for the board and for everyone else trying to make the best decision they can to try to share how as a county public health department, we came to our decision, what the timeline was, and really what type of information we looked at and reviewed. So I think that's important to share. A couple other points, just to bring forward before I get into some of the details. Decision making around COVID-19 is fluid. It's ever changing. The guidance is evolving day to day. I know I look at a number of resources, both local and national, state and federal, every single day, as do my colleagues, as do the people of public health, and we try to use these to make the best decisions we can. I am certain the data we see, the guidance that we're presented with, is going to continue to evolve. Most of the time, we get recommendations or guidance from CDC. Sometimes we flat out get directives from State DOH, and then we have to follow this, and we do our best with that. All of our decisions really focus on risk benefit. We're always looking at probabilities. We're trying to make, again, the best decision we can with imperfect information. And that's what it's all about, and that's what we try to do. And lastly, just to say that there's nothing simple about any of this. If there's one thing I've learned is that decisions I've made one month may be different the next month. And we're always looking at trends. We're looking at data, and we're talking to as many experts as we can. So to the timeline as to how we got into this decision about resumption of higher risk sports. January 22nd, Governor Cuomo made the announcement, basically saying as of February 1st, higher risk sports could resume in New York State if given the okay by local health departments and ultimately by school boards and parents and the students themselves, of course. Governor Cuomo asked us to look at a number of factors at the county level in deciding whether or not we would agree to go ahead and give the green light to sports. So he asked us to look at community testing positivity rates. The presence or absence of variant strains of COVID in your community. The ability of public health departments to track and trace contacts and hospitalization rates and resources of the region. Between January 23rd, January 28th, we had multiple conversations, both internally at the county, but also between counties. I was on conference calls, as were others, with Saratoga County, Washington County, Essex County, St. Lawrence County. I was not directly on calls, but many others were also with Albany, Schenectady County. Basically, the bottom line, we have many people involved. Saratoga County and Albany County have full-time public health commissioners, Dr. Elizabeth Whelan, Dr. Dan Coles. They were very involved in helping our decision-making. Our own experts here in Warren County, we reached out to on a regular basis. We spoke, we discussed, we reviewed the data. In addition to our discussions, we constantly looked at CDC guidance. We looked at publications from our own state DOH. We looked at publications from experts at the academic medical centers around the country. We tried to take a look at the benefits of resuming higher risk sports as well as the potential risk. We looked at various definitions of health, physical, mental, emotional, balancing increased activities, increased structure for adolescents with the potential risk of increased contact, the potential for any possible increased spread with COVID. And again, we weigh these. We made a decision on some metrics for positivity rates. We came to the consensus that we would use 4% as our positivity rate as a metric. And that if our county and the capital district region, and this was important, it was a both, both the capital district and Warren County, we stay below that metric and other factors continue to look positive, we would give the green light, saying this is reasonable to proceed. If people recall, when we first sent out a message at the end of January, we had not met those metrics. And our initial statement to the county is, no, not now. But we continue to watch, we continue to monitor. And over the next week, week and a half, the numbers came down. And we said, okay, with structures in place, with comprehensive plans and with commitments from schools, from athletes and from parents, we felt it was reasonable to proceed, and we issued that guidance. In a 10 to 14 days since that time, we've continued to monitor. And it's been really reassuring, at least for me, to see that numbers have continued to come down. As of today, Warren County is roughly 2.5% testing positivity rate. Capital District is very much the same number. I'm well aware that there's no guarantee that will continue, but it is reassuring. The other reassuring thing that we are seeing is around the state where they did resume high-risk, higher-risk sports a few days before us, their rates have also continued to fall. So we are watching that, and we're watching that closely. Another piece of data we look at closely is something called the R0 or reproduction rate. This is very difficult to calculate, and New York State actually does not publish it anymore. But it can be found county by county by going to the Harvard School of Public Health website. The governor was very excited to announce it had dropped below 1 roughly when he made his announcement. And as of today, Warren County is at .81. Anything less than 1 is reassuring, and it tends to mean that any virus or other entity is spreading very slowly. And in fact, numbers tend to be reducing. Again, this could change, but the indicator is reassuring. We've been watching this closely. So when we said, let's go ahead and give a green light to the law schools to put forth their plans and try to follow the guidelines that we put forward. We did emphasize, and I think it's important to emphasize now, that this is not a return to normal. No one at the county level said, okay, throw the balls on the court, throw the pucks on the ring, let's just play. We said with very strict guidelines, things that most people have never had to do before, that we're willing to see how this goes. For example, we emphasized that administrators had to be all on board, coaches had to be on board, students, athletes, parents had to be on board. Schools had to set up confidential hotlines to say, hey, if I see something, I can report it. It'll come back to the county so we can monitor. We recommended some extended procedures while not mandating them, and these included weekly testing. Again, everything we set out was to say, how can we try to make this happen in as safe a way as possible without increasing risk, hopefully giving a segment of the school community an important aspect of their lives and their education. So we took a hard look at that. One full disclosure that we tried to put out was the concept that if situations change, we may change our guidance. You know, for example, if concerning news came out, we started to see a surge in rates, we'd have to say pause or stop. If there is a positive test on a team, we have to pause until we clarify the situation and do contact tracing. So we very intentionally put in either speed bumps or stop signs, use as an analogy, to make hopefully people feel more comfortable that we're paying attention and doing our best to make this safe for the entire school community. We felt that this was an opportunity for structured activity in a highly controlled environment, not a situation to tell students or athletes or anyone else, just please go out and play without any rules. That's not the idea here. One of the things that I've seen at least come out of the studies nationally, when there have been problems either on college campuses or associated with sporting events. It's often the activity that's not happening on the field that is the problem. So built into our guidance was the idea of social distancing, mask wearing, careful hand washing when you're not actually competing. So that's either in training, when you're on the bench, with transportation, trying to minimize use of locker rooms, all those things. The congregation that can happen when people actually aren't competing in their sport. Wanted to reassure people that no matter what, our medical community and our public health community will continue to stand top of the latest data, latest recommendation and watch. At the end of the day, this is all about risk mitigation, attempting to give our students and our athletes some opportunity to do some things they like to do and arguably are important to their education and their lives. We pledge to continue to communicate with schools on a daily basis if questions arise, and we will give the best guidance we can. Certainly not under the feeling that we know everything about this disease. But again, we try to educate ourselves, and over the last year, I think we have learned a lot. So I'll stop there for a moment, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions people may have. I'm ready for questions. Okay. Okay. So the real answer is the details matter. In general terms, if you have, let's say in this situation, an athlete tests positive, the first thing you try to do is figure out who has that person been around in the preceding two days typically, who may have spent up to or more than 15 minutes with them in close proximity, so within six feet. So in this context, typically that would include their entire family, just as a gift, unless there's been absolutely no contact. You would then look at teammates they may have practiced with, if they had been in any way together for any period of time. So for example, if it was a basketball practice and half the team was at one hoop and half was at the other the entire time, only the half that had actually been with that person would be considered in contact, just as an example. Does that help a little? Okay. Sure. So in a typical quarant- in a typical quarantine, we do not quarantine the contact of the contact. So you put the immediate contact in quarantine, and you'd ask them a lot of questions. And you know, you would, in general, we want to test them. But we do not then extend that to the contact of the contact in terms of getting people in quarantine.
Anybody online, Joe or Tim, maybe?
Hi, President Dan, it's Joe. Doctor, thank you very much for the presentation so far, but one point I think you had made was that though, if a member of the team tests positive, that would be a pause.
So if a member of a team tests positive on the screening, that would definitely be a pause. We would obtain what's called a PCR, which is a more sensitive, more specific test to confirm whether that person was in fact positive. So until that PCR test came back, yes, the team would be on pause in terms of anyone who had been in contact with that person. If that PCR test then came back negative, the team could resume, assuming everyone was asymptomatic and passed their health screen. And if the test came back positive, well, then we would need to do further contact tracing and sort that out, but that would most certainly be a pause.
Thank you.
Dr. Borges, Tim Weaver. As we look further now into spring sports as we move forward, does there any, does that make anything more favorable to outdoor sports that would make it conducive to start play rather than indoor sports? Is there any fact, certain factor or anything that would come into mind?
So in general terms, outdoor sports are considered less at risk than indoor sports simply because they are outdoors. So I do think that is true.
Any other questions for Dr. Borges?
President Dan, just to follow up to Mr. Weaver's question, Doctor, thank you again. In terms of that, is that one of the things that we could look at as we view, you know, the spring sports coming up too? Is that the risk factors can change, as you said, like outdoor activities are less risky? So that could be a determining factor as well in terms of the decision.
Well, so I guess this, I want to make sure I understand the question, Joe. So what I would say is, in general, outdoor activities are considered less risky than indoor activities. Again, in terms of this discussion tonight, in terms of resumption of indoor sports at this time, I guess separate issue, but in general terms, resumption of outdoor sports, yes, would be less risky than indoor.
Thank you.
No, I'm done.
I don't know if you have reviewed the content that was provided to the board, Dr. Leonard approved of.
I have.
Would you agree that these metrics are providing or aren't fitting within that safety parameters that are part of that document?
So I do. So you know, I do work closely with Dr. Leonard. I do believe that the plan performed by the schools meets the parameters that we, as a county health department, thought were reasonable. So yes.
And thank you to Superintendent Dan and Athletic Group for providing us all this information. Between the workshop, the Friday reports, we were well prepared last week, I think. You mentioned that you read a lot of, you have read, interviewed a lot of studies, information. Are you getting any information on athletics or people that have resumed throughout New York State or regionally or nationally? Is that something you pay attention to?
I do pay attention to this. And so what I've seen so far, and granted, this just started, but looking at, say, downstate New York, parts of central New York, western New York, to this point, I've not seen changes or increases in test positivity rates, which is reassuring. I spent a good amount of time as well looking at trends in other states, and this is interesting. You know, the country, you know, some states have been playing high school sports all the way through. Some have not. Some have played with masks, some have played without masks. And it's interesting, at least the trends I'm looking at nationally, really in most every state right now, trends continue to go down in terms of test positivity rates. It's always impossible to know exactly what that means, but it is reassuring that with a variety of different approaches to high school sport, we haven't seen dramatic spike in other places. So that is fair.
And with new strains that we've heard a lot about,
Yes.
Looked at things that have trends or is there coming down?
Yeah. So I think if anybody watches any type of national media, everybody's talking about variant strains right now, and there's no question that this is a cause for concern. Most experts we talk to or listen to are concerned that the newer strains aren't infectious. And so we're watching this very, very carefully, and this is one of the factors. If we started to see a significant number of cases in our area, might well change how we all approach things. About a month ago, we did see a few cases of the U.K. strain in the Saratoga, Warren County area. To my knowledge, we've not seen a significant number since that time. And fortunately, we continue to see falling positivity rates. We absolutely will watch this very, very closely. The whole world is watching this very closely to see what happens. And so again, the way I would put it is, we're very aware, and we're going to keep a close eye on it. And if we start to see concerning problems, then we would reassess what we're doing.
One last question, just in line with, just to follow up on what I asked a second ago. You have reviewed the plan, and would you agree or disagree that if later with safety criteria is in place, it exits threatening? If, if a circumstance were to present itself and to deal with any situations, it could complicate any type of transmission.
So yes, and that was very intentional. And again, when we, when we put this out from the county, we asked every school to try to put in those types of, again, we call them speed bumps or stop signs because we wanted to make it clear that this was not carte blanche, go for it. This was, hey, in a very controlled way, let's see what we can do here. That was the whole point.
So as a scientist, I'm completely agree, and I'm glad that the data is being followed. I appreciate that. Just to ask one more follow-up, if it's outside of what you want to talk about, that's fine, just stop. The, some discussion before with some board members about mental health, emotional health, and physical health, I believe you mentioned it in your opening. I believe you mentioned it in your opening first beginning comments. Are there any data or information that you can share more about that, or is that not special to you with what's going on?
So really, no, no data I want to share on that, other than to say that certainly in general, there are lots of experts, there's, sorry, there are lots of facets rather to someone's health. And there are components of emotional health, physical health, mental health, and a balanced life is part of that. And I think again, at the county level, and certainly for myself in looking at this, you're always on a continuum. How much do you open the bell in terms of getting back to some sense of normal? And that's certainly part of what I looked at, and I think what really all of us looked at. The challenge, of course, is we all have slightly different, slightly different way of looking at risk and how, what we feel is okay or not okay. And that's where we come from with our life experiences and, and what we do and how we look at the world. But yes, we actually looked at that.
One other question for Dr. Borges. And I'm ready to continue with you.
No, I'm taking questions.
I have in front of me, it's the National Federation of State High School Association Sports Medicine Advisory Committee guidance on COVID-19 transmission during high school sports. Can you let me get that before?
I am.
And it's nice to see that everything you've gotten touched on. They call for the elimination of high, medium, and risk categories. And they also call for the consideration of the five factors, one including the one that you said, the community positivity rate. Do you disagree or agree with this statement? That cases of direct COVID-19 transmission during athletics remain relatively rare?
So from what I've read, there is not great data on this. So I've read the report you're referring to, and it's interesting, it actually came out only about a week ago, so it's relatively new. The best way I would answer that is this is a big unknown area, a lot of people are studying it. And my own sense is one of the reasons we're not getting more direct guidance on some of this is people are still learning. Yeah.
And just one other thing, it did say though that the, what you said before, based on cumulative evidence that the majority of sports related spread COVID-19 appears to occur from social contact, not sports participation.
So my take on that, and this is my opinion, is that is most likely accurate. And the reason I say that is when we look at, you know, contact tracing or spread in other situations on college campuses or in the community, so much of that does seem to center around social gatherings, people's homes, restaurants, none of which are intrinsically bad things to do unless, of course, you're in the middle of a COVID pandemic. So my suspicion is that those types of scenarios are in many ways related to spread. Is there a possibility it happens during competition itself? It's possible. And again, it's an area that needs further study.
Thanks, Dr. Borges.
Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Borges? No. Of course, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Information provided, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we're going to hear from Mr. Keys and Mr. Gannon, a brief, I think more of an update presentation. Do need to talk about timelines that have been moved up. I think they may reference that as something to watch maybe, the things that changed this past week with what we knew previous.
So thank you to everyone that's here tonight and also online, we appreciate that. Just so you know, the first slide, this, this has been a very difficult topic to work through, and I appreciate everybody that's in this room as well as online. Had lots and lots of dialogue around this, but tonight's a night for discussion too. The board has wanted to discuss, I've heard that multiple times, that the board would like to have a discussion. So I'm going to present this information, and we're hoping the board would be able to discuss anything at the end of this that they would like clarity on, or anything that Mr. Keys and I have not answered. So when you look at this first slide, you can see this is the capital region, and this was tonight. This is yesterday's data, but it just got published a few hours ago. And if you take a look, again, I've been asked several times, I want to make sure that this is clear to everybody. The way that the positive rates in those seven day averages are factored are the total tested number of people versus the number of people that test positive. So when you look at, if you take a look at Albany County, which is one county that we are, it's, it's bold that are looked at for us to meet the metrics. Albany tested 3,431 people yesterday, 51 tested positive. Yesterday, that was 1.5%. Their seven day rolling average, seven days in a row is 2.4. That's one county that's looked at, and then the other county, the other metric that has been set forward. Yesterday, Warren County tested 457 people, six tested positive. And that's a 1.3% for yesterday and a seven day rolling average of 2.7%. We watch this every day, we look at the metrics, and we also receive a fantastic update. A Warren County Public Health each day letting us know what's happening. But right now, these are the metrics that are happening. I want to go over, I know this looks complicated, but I want to make sure that I explain this in great detail. Mr. Keys and I have been given a lot of information, and we're staying up to date. This is what we've been working on all weekend, making sure we know exactly what's happening. Today is February 15th. We know that our winter sports could have been going from the 15th of right now through their last day is the 13th of March. And that's when winter sports ends. We also know that the two, fall two is what they're categorized as volleyball and football. Right now, we know that those are on the docket, and those have to be discussed next Monday night. So those are slated to start on March 7th. And at this time, if you take a look, Rich and I planned, Mr. Keys and I planned to have those preparedness plans submitted to Dr. Leonard and the Board of Education by the 19th of February. That's why that X is there, and the board worked, so the board could review them, talk to us, ask questions on the 22nd. And we were just told specifically because of the situation that Queensberry is faced with right now, that Section 2 has told us that we have to have a decision for all Section 2, all of Section 2 by March 3rd, because they will not make schedules and have people that do not start up. That's been told to us, so a decision has to be made. Rich and I have asked, or I asked Dan, for us to get back together on the 25th of February. If that's enough time for the board to be able to ask, they would get the preparedness plans on the 19th for those two sports. The 22nd would be a workshop centered around those. Dr. Leonard would have seen them, given us his feedback, and whether or not we've received approval from him. And then we'd ask that the board get back together on the 25th to decide whether or not those two high-risk sports go forward. We can't, we've been told by the section that we can't leave people, we have to either, we have to commit. And so, or we, or not. So that's something that we, we know we have, we're faced with. So this is the timeline, I know it's a lot to look at. The X, the Xs equal fall two, and the Qs equal the winter season, just so everyone's aware.
We seem to have lost audio. Answer.
Did they not hear what I said?
No, we lost audio for a moment, Kyle.
Thank you, Amy, for telling me. Did you get the last slide?
Not the slide with the graph with the numbers.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Amy. So if you take a look at the left-hand column right here, this was the district on January 11th. So our active, we keep track of our active positivity rate, we look at this chart every day, the data is updated. And so you can see onsite then, right then and there, we had 2,905 people onsite every day. We were monitoring 26 active cases for the people that are onsite. So we know since January 11th, today is the 15th. As of today, we're monitoring one active case, it's at point 04, and that person falls off on Tuesday. So that's right now, that's the district as a whole, there's one active case within our entire district. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Keys.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon, and special thanks to the Board of Education for having this opportunity to further discuss our high-risk sports. We listened to the Board of Education the last time that we met on February 8th, and one of the things that kind of stuck out to me was that the board wanted to have an opportunity to hear a little bit more from our, from our students. And ultimately, we collaborated with our team leaders in many ways. Letters were generated, collected, and turned into the Board of Education for review in hopes that they would ultimately provide you with a little bit of insight into the thoughts of our student body. Some of the common themes regarding to that was their willingness or commitment to the protocols and the safety plans that have been established, as well as accountability. We talked a little bit about academic eligibility, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a minute. But the students recognized their piece and their accountability that goes along with any, any safety plan that would be put in place for high-risk sports. We reviewed this slide on the 8th as well, this was our high-risk sport requirements, much more than just the percent of the infection rate in the local community. We talked about our sport-specific preparedness plan, informed consent forms, medical clearance, and so on and so forth, agreeing to follow all of these protocols that have been established in that 13-page document. So what has changed since February 8th? One of the things that we were able to obtain is not only the medical director approval from our district, but also you had an opportunity to listen to Dr. Borges this evening on behalf of Warren County, indicating that the metrics have since been met from the, from the previous meeting, which is grounds for their willingness to move forward with, with any plan for high-risk sports. Clarification on the COVID-19 variant, Dr. Borges was able to elaborate on that as well. I know that that was a question that came from the last meeting. We've spoken about this numerous times already this evening, but the infection rate in Warren County in the week since we've spoken last has gone down significantly from over 4% to that 2.7, 2.5 range, both within our county and within the capital regions, all the counties that make up the capital region. Additional school districts and counties have been approved for play because of changes related to these metrics. Teams are participating successfully without a quote-unquote spike in infections. We were able to hear Dr. Borges kind of state that as well, but my own research and collaboration with the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, their research and their information supports that as well. Clarification on the academic eligibility policy, as many of you know, we do have an academic eligibility policy. Our academic eligibility lists of students who are in jeopardy get generated every five weeks. We would utilize whatever time period is relevant to the resumption of, of sports for, for these students. If it happened to be, currently, we go back to our second marking period final grades, established students who are failing more than two or more classes, they will be generated on a list that would require them to obtain clearance from their teachers that they're indeed working towards passing, they're doing all the things necessary. If they do not obtain that approval, then they're ineligible for participation in contests the following week. That's something that's an ongoing process throughout our, our, our normal academic school year, and we manage that on a day-to-day basis through the support of our coaching staff, who also has these, these critical conversations with their students to make sure that in all cases, the academic priority is always number one. Able to change confidential reporting to a different district employee, that was something that was mentioned that if, you know, could it potentially be considered a conflict of interest if myself as the director of athletics, I'm also the COVID coordinator, to also be responsible for the confidentiality of concern or something that were to come in? And I like to think that I'm somewhat of a high level of integrity, however, that, that makes perfect sense to me. And if someone else needs to be that individual, we can certainly make an adjustment to that. However, I felt like my knowledge in, in how the contact tracing process works and the collaboration that I have with Warren County would be a logical choice, however, it can certainly be, be adjusted to whoever it happens to be. Clarification on what constitutes a pause, I'm not quite sure I can clarify any better for you what that means beyond what Dr. Borges had, but it's outlined in our policy, or in our plan, excuse me, to certainly pause in the event of a positive case in which we need to conduct contact tracing, but also in a situation where if we feel as though our students or constituents are not abiding by the safety plan to the degree necessary, then I feel very comfortable in making that decision because it's, it's our responsibility for the overall safety of, of the students within the district and the community. Adjustments that have been made to the preparedness plan that addressed questions that were brought to, to myself at our last board meeting, I think it's important to be responsive to a lot of those concerns. But established consequences for not adhering to the safety protocols is something that was, was brought up. And to be honest with you, I wasn't prepared to answer that question at that time because I just thought that if that was the case, we would have to ultimately remove him from the program. But essentially, I think, in thinking about it a little bit more in depth, that if we have an individual who inadvertently violates the safety protocols, there's redirection, there's, there's kind of sitting out and maybe removing for a short period of time before we would get to the point where, look, you're, you're just not safe enough. We have to ask you to leave the program. We would want to demonstrate a progression in that if it was something that was inadvertent. However, if it was something that was more deliberate, then that would be, you know, a gross negligence piece on that individual, and we would have to ultimately ask them to be removed from the program. So those, those consequences have been thought through and discussed with our coaching staff as well. Discussion around full virtual options for high-risk sport athletes. I know one of the concerns that was brought up was directly related to the potential transmission of the virus if someone were to test positive to somebody else who has made a decision not to be involved in this type of activity. And thankfully, we have data that supports that that's very low risk. We have data that supports that it hasn't happened here from student to student, student to staff, staff to student. However, we respect that, and I feel as though that if that is an option that has to be on the table for our plan, then, then that is a concession that would, that would be made or considered. You know, I think it's beyond myself to make that final decision, but I think it's certainly worthy of further discussion for the sake of, of that, that risk-reward opportunity. In closing, for, for my sake and for the districts, I think there's a couple of questions here that, that would be imperative to ask the board, in that is there any additional information and/or clarification that can be provided to the board on the facts related to COVID-19, the preparedness plan, or any other procedures that we have in place? And are there any additional measures that the Board of Education would like to see in place or to be considered in the area? or to be considered in the area of high-risk sports?
Thank you, Mr. Keys. We're hoping, Mr. Gannon, we could get some feedback, please, from any of the board members.
I'll reach out to the board just the first question you had about your preparedness plan. There will be another preparedness plan for football and volleyball, is that correct?
That is correct.
Just say it'll be similar, but different.
Yeah, different. I know Mr. Keys has a Thursday meeting this week with all section two, or all of the selective classification, the, the teams that play in our league. And they are working together on it to make sure that at county by county, there's fluidity. Just as when we built our other plans, we worked with all of Warren County, with all the other Warren County schools to make sure that we were, you know, double-checking and triple-checking. But Mr. Keys has that on Thursday. And I know his goal and my goal is to have that to the Board of Education as well as Dr. Leonard by Friday. That's our goal, to make sure the board has it for the weekend, to be able to see if they have any questions. And certainly, Dr. Borges, we'll share it with Dr. Borges at the county too, and get any feedback, just like the first time. You know, we shared that with Dr. Leonard to make sure. And he, you know, got right back to us. And we went through it with a fine-tooth comb.
The sport-specific elements related to football and volleyball will be added to the overall general sentiments of what the preparedness plan reflects now.
And you all know all the details till Thursday? Is that fair to say, Matt?
So in, in the sport of football, we play classification play. Classification play is all like-size schools within Section 2. So we have a Class A athletic director, sport-specific, related to football, meeting to, to discuss these. Because we are from multiple leagues, multiple counties. And when we just, when we devise these preparedness plans, we want to ensure that we're speaking the same language, that the rules of, that apply to Queensberry apply to schools that are in Saratoga, Albany, Rensselaer, and so on throughout, throughout the rest of the capital region, Section 2.
And do you know now, or will you know, for the state of sport of volleyball, as far as will it be specific for playing teams within Warren County? Will that be an option? Playing a certain league, certain section? I mean, it's not, I'm anticipating it's not gonna be a full schedule with our whole foothills council, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, I, I'm anticipating, right now, I, I'm sure that, I know the foothills council superintendents get together frequently. And I'm anticipating one of those calls as well, where we go through that discussion. Right now, for basketball, what happened was that Warren County said they were willing to play just Warren County schools. So right now, currently, all the Warren County schools are just playing within Warren County. So, and that's, that was an agreement, which came forward. And then, you know, we haven't had that discussion centered around volleyball yet. Right now, we're still, I know the discussions are centered around soccer and field hockey as well, because those are, are headed off the ground too. So we haven't gotten to volleyball yet, but I'm sure very soon.
It doesn't matter, correct, soccer and field hockey?
Soccer and field hockey are modern, but the, but the, you know, the superintendents are still working on those discussions of, you know, where, what athletic facilities they'll be played at. Ours are hopefully golden goal in Fortin. That's what we're hoping for, we're working with them.
Can I have any questions?
This might be premature because you might be talking about this when you get together. With spectators in regards to an indoor arena like volleyball versus an outdoor facility like football? Is it too soon?
Yeah, no, I can tell you that. I'll tell you all the dialogue that's happened. That's been a real up-and-down conversation. Inside, I think we've all agreed, there's no spectators. We can stream, we have the capability to stream here. John has done a great job of getting that together. We were well-prepared for that ahead of time. So we were able to stream every event just to have our athletes in the gym. And we, we had told our athletes that that's, that was how it was gonna be. And we really, you know, when you can sit at home and watch an event, that's, that's nice too. In the fall, we did not allow spectators. So that was a real push from our, our foothills council. They all got together and it, you know, and we hash it out. I, I don't know what the spring and, and what those two seasons will bring. But my anticipation is anything that's inside right now, I can't imagine spectators being there. We can stream it just as well. It will be a little harder this spring. We were very nervous in the fall about, you know, even, you know, two parents being there and trying to keep track of contact tracing and who was where. But more to come on that. We've talked about having two adults outside, an actual electronic sign-in for parents so that we can keep track of, you know, if we ever got to that. But there, there would never, I can't imagine, I know some schools have done it very successfully, like Shenandoah. They've given parents passes to wear when they come. And they actually, there's a mechanism for keeping track of who's there. And they spread out and they have two parents, and only the parents could come. So that's something that I have seen for the fall sports at Shen. But we haven't gotten to the spring piece yet. Right now, we're currently working on the ones that we've been talking about. Yeah, of course. Anybody online, Tim?
Yeah, Dan, I have a question for Mr. Keys. The second to last slide. You talked about, I, I need a clarification. You talked about consequences for not adhering to the plan and the safety protocol. You said, A, you got the question, you weren't ready to answer it. And you looked back and you, you thought that if there was a problem, then maybe there would be a consequence. And then maybe a second consequence, removal of the team. Am I understanding that correct? So maybe a one chance?
I think it all depends on the nature of the violation of the protocol. You know, the intention, was it, was it an incidental or accidental violation of, of the protocol? Or was it deemed to be more intentional or total disregard for what it was that we were trying to accomplish? You know, right away, I kind of think of the importance of masking and distancing. And if, if a student were to be improperly wearing their mask, you know, maybe it's, it's a redirection of, of the importance of wearing their mask properly at all times. And if it happened again, maybe it's, listen, you know, but we would be a little bit more progressive with something like that. If it's, if it's something much more intentional and, and in direct violation of, and, and obvious, I, I think you have to take a harder stance with that. And I think that's something that we're prepared to do when, if the opportunity were to present itself, because there would be meetings with, with coaches, there would be meetings with teams, there would be meetings with parents to, to lay out the, the process and what needs to occur. And, and I'm, I'm very comfortable with being firm in those expectations. Does that answer your question, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I guess. I'm just concerned for the, the intentional, um, not adhering to the protocol. I don't think there's room for error in this, this specific. And, you know, I, I do agree with you, um, accidental, stuff like that. But if it's the obvious of intentional or, or just carelessness and not paying full attention to the plans you've set in place, then, like I said, I, I, I do have a problem with that. And to me, there's no room for that error. But thanks for the clarification.
And, and I, I don't disagree with you when it comes to that. Complete disregard for the plan.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Joe, or?
Yep, Mr. Mr. Keys, thank you for that. I actually have two questions, one for Mr. Gannon and one for Mr. Keys. Mr. Keys, thank you for that too. And again, just a little bit more clarification. First of all, I think this presentation is fantastic because we can look at trends, we can see things as we look forward to the next group of sports coming up in terms of what the parameters should be. It's fantastic. But one thing that concerns me, and this may go along with what Mr. Weaver has indicated. I saw, I read today, 4.4 million people were on airlines this week. So New York State still has, if you come back to New York State, mandatory three-day quarantine test on the fourth day. Is there any program? And I think that could be a concern, not only just for sports, but also for, you know, the general student body. Are there any protocols, Mr. Keys, in place? Because this is like a, you know, a, a one-time thing because it's a vacation, but is there a concern for that?
In relation to the travel restrictions, Mr. Schreiber?
Yeah, exactly. In other words, of people returning. And again, with the, it's like the honor system that you had said. But is there any protocols by the school to double-check? I, I would like to assume everyone is honest. Oh, they said, yes, I've traveled. But is there any double-checking with that as students return?
Well, I, I think we can follow up on anything that gets brought to our attention. We also, but we do have a procedure in place related to our pinpoint app that asks a question specific to travel. And it would be, once again, it's the parent's obligation to answer those questions correctly. But if they had traveled outside of New York State to a non-contiguous state for longer than 24 hours, upon their return, prior to their return, they would have to obtain a negative COVID test. Then once back in New York after quarantining for three days, have to receive an additional COVID test on the fourth day. If that COVID test is a rapid, they would get their answer that day. If it was a PCR, they would be out even longer awaiting the result of the PCR. As a district, we have made a determination that if a PCR is warranted by the physician or the travel advisory, whatever it might be, that we will not permit readmittance until the result of the PCR comes back. That's a question on our pinpoint app screening protocols that outside of the parents answering that honestly, there's, there's no other real way to manage that other than if it's something that we're made aware of, we can follow up with the family.
Thank you, Mr. Keys.
There's a hotline for that as well. Yep.
I have another que-
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
I have another question for Mr. Gannon. You spoke, I just want to make sure and clarification. You spoke of no spectators, of course, inside, but the outdoor sports, you would limit, still need to talk about? Or you would limit that to two parents per person, per athlete?
We have it, it's, to say, just as an FYI, Mr. Weaver, I'm gonna be consistent with all of the foothills council schools. So we get, we got to, we've gotten together as superintendents and we've decided to go unanimously with a group decision. So that's for each sport, it's decided with all 10 superintendents. We get on together, we talk through it. And we've agreed that we're not gonna do something different at other schools that will all hold the same pattern. So we have not talked through those sports yet. We're, we're probably do a call. I do get my shot on Wednesday, so I probably, hopefully, I'm still, you know, ready to go on Thursday or Friday for a call this week. But it's, uh, it's probably gonna happen later this week, would be my guess.
Okay, thanks.
Of course.
Dan, I have a question, please. Thank you, Kyle and Rich, for putting this together. I appreciate that and all the information. I guess I'm wondering, two-part. Where are our students academically in the high school? I know that they've been 50% virtual. Are they where we want them to be academically? And also, what is the plan to bring them back full-time before maybe sports start?
Well, I think there's, there's several answers to that, Pat. What we've done, we already started, I, I know, I notified the board last week that we've allowed any student that's in-person learning for the senior class to be back full-time. So that would be the Monday after break. Damian's here with me, and I can certainly let him answer this one as well. But Damian, Dan Ham, and Amy Snyder and I have worked together. And we're, we're right now, they've put out a request to the junior class to find out how many. And we're working our way down through with the ultimate goal to make sure that we can fit students and that it can happen. But we'd like to get through inviting all the students in person in our high school that are in-person learners back before the end of March would be, is our goal.
Thank you.
I got your academic question as well, right, Pat?
I'm sorry, Pat, did I miss one?
Well, I want to know how they're doing academically overall. Are they where we want them to be? Because, I mean, I know that they've been virtual 50% of the time. So are they in good standing? How are they all doing?
I'm gonna let Dave, it's okay, I'm gonna, but Damian's here. I'm gonna let him answer that one.
I don't mean to put you on spot, Damian.
That's okay, Miss Beldon. Yeah, so we have been tracking the academic performance, you know, every five weeks, at least quarterly, we analyze student performance data. The failure rates were a little higher than we anticipated after quarter one. I think after quarter two, they, they are a little bit better as our students adjust to the hybrid model. At the high school, we have a little over 30% of our students chose the, to be fully virtual. And we know that at the high school, we have the capacity right now to invite more students back. So we started that process right after the holiday break. At each grade level, we identified students that we knew would do better from daily attendance. So we started inviting those struggling students back at every grade level. And our plan right now is reaching out to the seniors. They're in the final semester of their senior year. Again, we have the capacity in our building to invite more students back. So we did do a communication. And on the 28th, right after the winter recess, we're expecting at least 40 to 50 more seniors to return to us. We're excited about that. There's still families that are requesting that option. And then as Mr. Gannon indicated, our plan is to work our way down through the grade levels, reach out to the juniors, assess our building capacity, and work our way down through the grade levels. So that, that's our plan moving forward. We know that students statistically, when students are here in person, they do better. So that's another reason why, you know, we're reaching out to invite more students back for the in-person learning. I hope that answers your question.
It, it does. Thank you very much, Damian.
Thank you.
Dan, Tim, I was just wondering if Mr. Gannon or Damian, you could provide some type, some type of data in a spreadsheet? Not athlete-specific, by no means, but an overall of where we are in percentile grade, grade range before break? And then I'd be curious to see it maybe two to three weeks after break?
For their academic performance?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Sure, we could, so you're looking for the data for the entire high school on average? Or are you looking for, I want to make sure I get the right data?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
I was probably looking more towards athlete-specific, but.
So we, yeah, sure, we can get that together for you and share that out. We do have, just so everyone's aware, I, I think it sounds like, you know, there, there may not be a lot of students here. We have, just so everyone's aware, and I'll, I'll share the data with the board. But we have, at the elementary level right now, K3, we're, we're, we've only got 130 students that are virtual right now. The rest are here with us. We have a lot of students that are here. Our parents have been awesome. We've been able to keep our doors open since, since October, every day for in-person learning. So we have had a lot of students. And it's very clear from our teacher's perspective, and this is opinion, but I hear it often, that they believe that our students are growing very well, the ones that are here. They've got Fountains and Penelope at the elementary level, as you all know, K5. And we're, we're seeing significant gains again. So that, that's good news on the academic performance. We did hear from, I, I know the board's aware that Mr. Keys and I met with the athletes after our protest last week. And we did hear from them that athletics was a big part of their decision to come back full-time for many of them. And I know people can look at that any way they want, but we did hear that from the students. Mr. Keys and I sat in the Queensberry room for an hour and a half with our athletes, talking to them about their concerns. And we listened to everything they said. And they said, that's part of what makes them want to be a part of our school is the athletic portion.
Mr. Gannon, it's Joe. I forgot before the question, I did have a question.
I'm just gonna get to you, Joe, I thought you forgot one. I'm just gonna get to you, Joe. I thought you forgot one.
And I do apologize because it's a very basic question, but you know, I'll tell you why I'm asking the question, Kyle, because uh through social media after the last meeting, um there were a lot of statements whereby it was stated that, oh, all sports are canceled, which is not the case. It was basically the winter, but I think there's still a lot of confusion, and I'm asking you just a quick little synopsis, the difference between the moderate sports, what are the parameters for that, the high-risk sports? What is allowed and what is not allowed, and why are high-risk sports even being considered? Because I saw that in many posts, and I think there's some confusion.
Sure. Um I I think what has happened here is a very, very difficult circumstance. I think the governor uh put this on the county health departments, and then it was put on the boards of education, and you know, I, do I agree with that process? I don't. Um philosophically, I think it was a lot of weight to put on a lot of people's shoulders. But at the end of the day, when the governor did that, um we knew going into this year that 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 whole high-risk, moderate-risk, and low-risk sport designation had been given to different sports. Um we also know that there's new information that's out that's trying to uh take away any of that, just basically saying that sports aren't classified in those three areas, and that's what um was referred to tonight. For winter right now, what was considered a high-risk sport was boys' basketball, girls' basketball, cheerleading, hockey, and wrestling. Um when I was approached by the Board of Education about uh having different plans in place, other options, um the option that I came to the Board of Education with was no wrestling. And I said no wrestling, and a lot of schools put that forward, and I didn't put that forward because when working with Dr. Leonard, I felt that that wasn't safe. Um that we we talked a lot about mask-wearing, and it's not possible for wrestling. So I was not comfortable putting that forward. So that was really option B. Um so that, and those are the high-risk sports. When we look at moderate and low-risk sports, we've had our moderate and low-risk sports going, and to date, right now, um they've been very successful. I think you probably read about our athletes in the paper for downhill skiing, for cross-country, for Nordic skiing, um for bowling. So our our programs have been going, but right now, uh a moderate risk for fall two is those sports are field hockey and boys and girls soccer. They're classified as moderate risk coming up. High-risk are football and volleyball. Um those, those are the classifications. In the spring, um everything is moderate risk except for boys' lacrosse. Boys' lacrosse is considered high-risk. So that's a situation where unless something changes, we would have to have our Board of Education act on that one as well. So I know this was a lot of information for the board over a lot of weeks, and I know that um communicating this to the board was, you know, a a lot. But truthfully, um right now, the high-risk sports that are there are the only ones that the board has to act on. The others are just recommendations from me as the coaches. So unless the the board gave approval, which truly wasn't fair, um it wasn't fair. It should, it was tossed out quickly, and um I I truly wish that it had, you know, been fully on my shoulders. Swimming is also, and swimming, I'm sorry, girl swimming is also there as well. Boys' swimming just concluded, and girls' swimming is considered moderate risk, and that will be starting up as well.
And Mr. Gannon, thank, thank you so much. You know, I didn't mean to belabor that point, but I think there was some misconception that all sports were voted down, and that wasn't the case. It was just one thing, and sports have been going on right along and will be.
Yeah, thank you for that, Joe.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but
Use your microphone, please, Lucy.
I don't have a question, but you know, you talk about the students, but I just want to make sure that it's ours. At the end of the last meeting, I did ask them, you know, if they had anything that they wanted to contribute, and I kind of felt like they were put on the spot. They never wanted to prepare the answers. How does it look like if you had that? So I just want to acknowledge that, you know, they sent all of these letters. I read every one multiple times. I highlighted some, and they were very heartfelt, I think, to me. I'm not going to call out one in particular, there are some that, um, you know, definitely resonated with me. One of them actually said they didn't feel like they had a voice. And I'm not really going to stop and think. I don't think, this is all about the students, and they need to have a voice. And I just want to make sure, you know, they may not agree with us, but
I'm sorry, Dan, I'm sorry, State or Stacy interrupted. Could you hand her the microphone, please?
No.
Uh, very difficult to hear.
Sorry, ma'am, I'll hand her the microphone.
I just want to make sure that this is inside of the hour. I mean, there's a hundred and sixty-nine people on this call. And at the last meeting, I did ask the schools, I wanted to hear from the students. We got to the very end, and they didn't get a chance to speak. So I wanted to ask them how they felt. And a couple of them, unfortunately, not unfortunately, but they just got pulled, they're going to be up, you know, they can be on, they're going to pop. And they really weren't probably as prepared as, you know, they probably wished to get down. And, you know, I feel bad about that. They wrote these letters to us. I'm not, maybe there's certain, I can count to every one of them. Um and they were heartfelt. They came from their heart. You know, there's a lot of things in there that resonated with me, um made me stop and think, you know, and there was one in particular that said, they feel like they didn't have a voice. And that really, you know, I just want to make sure that these students feel like that they have a voice. And I know that he said that they gave me a feeling, and, you know, that you talked to them about that. But maybe we need to make, maybe in my own opinion, perhaps I need to do a better job to make sure that they have a voice. Not just speak for the entire board, just speaking for me. Um, this school, you know, we have a lot of them. I'm the only one that I'm on the board. It doesn't mean that I care more. It doesn't mean that any of the other boards on this care less. Each board member really puts students first. And some of these students are extremely hard. And for me, you know, I love this school. I walk these, I walk these all from kindergarten to twelfth grade. You know, I get it, it, you know, it's it's hard, and and uh I just want to make sure that, you know, the students are acknowledged. Um, and just speaking for me, I read these letters multiple times. So for those of you that are out there, I did hear you. Thank you for writing them and for me to get it.
Thanks, David. I think you've taken the board's that, I know I read them multiple times, well, I think everyone did. They were uh, they were very well, well-written, both by, any other questions?
Actually, Dan, go ahead. I know questions, but um I'd like to also comment on what Stacy had to say. I would like to take the opportunity to thank the kids that, that student athletes that took time to write letters to the Board of Education. As my wife can attest, I read each and every one of them, and uh here I am. Here's the highlights on the paper that uh tried to get everybody's points across. Uh particularly like one of the stories about the student athlete who told a story about when golf, or when um football was over, he decided to travel to golf. And after a few balls in the woods and a broken club, he realized he probably wasn't going to make the team, but he and I have a lot in common when it comes to golf. And one of the other kids mentioned something about Bill Murray down all day. If you have a favorite, that's Bill Murray waking up day after day after day in the same routine, over and over and over, and feeling hopeless and changing. And there was another athlete who also wrote about his mom being immune-compromised, stayed with at the hospital. He had they encouraged him to continue to play sports. Each and every letter told a special bond created between teammates. Each one described discipline, selflessness, perseverance, confidence, and work ethic sports have instilled in them. Each letter vowed to take the safety protocols seriously. No matter what was asked, one person even said they'd be willing to wear three masks. But no letter touched me more, however, than the one athlete. No letter touched me more, however, than the one athlete who told them being introverted and bullied when they were young. How sports has been an outlet for me, everyday battles they have with depression and anxiety. And asking us to reconsider high-risk sports, this comment, I need your help, brought tears to my eyes. You know, the quote, one of the letters from the athlete's mom, has never rang true, but it does today. Sports might not need the kids, but the kids need sports. Each letter conveys the athlete's dream to continue high-school sports. The dream of practicing with teammates, all working hard to attain same goals. The hopes and dreams of returning to some sense of normalcy in their lives. When elected to the Board of Education, I embrace the opportunity and challenge of having to make positive decisions that influence all students, all students who attend. And the one thing that continues to drive me forward in that challenge is our school's mission statement. Empower all students to be lifelong learners, inspired to pursue their dreams and contribute to the global community. I feel as a board member, it's my obligation, and and no, what, no, it's our obligation to do everything we can to inspire our students to attain their dreams. Thanks.
Mr. Carvana, thank you very much for that. This is Joe again. I too really enjoyed reading all of the letters. Um they were heartfelt, they were passionate. But what you have just indicated to me is sports in general, not just one segment, but all of sports, how important it is. It's not one person, it's not two. It could be fifty, it could be a hundred, it could be the low-risk, the moderate-risk as well as decisions about the high-risk. But your point is well-taken, and it is all about the people with sports and how important it is to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you all. Anything else for the comments or questions from Mr. Gannon and Keys? There are none, anything else, Mr. Gannon and Keys?
I just had one more thing um for the Board of Education. I know I was asked about clubs and activities, and I took that very seriously um when the board asked um talking about more opportunities. I think we all know that all of our arts are currently happening. I think we know that uh we've met with the drama production crew, and that's going to happen. As of uh last week, Mr. Switzer and I worked on it, and I believe we posted almost twenty clubs in our high school that will continue, and they will be coming to the Board of Education soon, and the middle school posted a plethora of clubs as well that haven't been running. Uh so I just wanted to inform the board that all those are all posted up and run, or not posted and will be up and running very soon, uh coming to the board. We are full steam ahead, trying to get as much for our kids as we can in all avenues.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon. As we said at the beginning, Bryce at the beginning, this is uh just a workshop, there'd be no resolution, no votes, but I do have a just the final statement um here, uh unless, does anyone else have anything they wish to add before the votes? Yeah, actually, I have one. It was brought up, uh and I briefly played about the the students needing to have a voice. And uh, Mr. Gannon, when were you the, a teacher? You probably know these kids that are currently, that are currently in the high school uh from your pre-administrator days. So you spent a lot of time with these students over the years, do you agree?
I have, most of these, I'm trying to ask you to fill it up here. Most of these kids have that with me since I was a principal. I know almost everyone that by name. Yeah, they're, I claim all of them, they're my kid.
You're you're a champion for the students in our district, uh and I I I couldn't be prouder of you and superintendent that you are. Uh and I think the students would probably agree one hundred percent. And as I said earlier, I just can't thank you enough for everything that you did throughout this whole process to bring us a resolution last week. It was succinct, to the point, and as I said with uh Dr. Morris a bit ago, littered with eggs of strategy should uh situate in prison itself. And and I think that you're you're a champion for these kids and actually, and I hope the community knows that.
Thank you.
Actually, thank you. Um at this time, uh I need to announce that September, February eighth, the board made a decision. We appreciate the understanding of the community and cannot stress enough um that it was a very difficult decision. But this time, the board is going to stand by the decision to not move forward with winter high-risk sports. We will be moving on, uh the meeting again on Monday, the twenty-second, we will have another workshop, perhaps a meeting, but that stands a little, might be a little fluid between now and next Monday, and um we will discuss and eventually make a decision on fall two high-risk sports. So nothing else in the workshop. Appreciate everyone attending tonight. Appreciate your attention to this, appreciate your passion for Queensberry School, students in the committee and the community. Thank you, board members, for all being here tonight, and we'll uh have more information this week, another meeting in uh next Monday. Thank you all.